In the meeting. Hi, everyone. I'm Rebecca. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:01. And as far as the roll call, Ellen, we have, well, everyone's here with, actually, everyone's here. I believe, right, we.
Except me.
Right, Mary's not here. But everyone's here, and we have a couple guests. We have Kent Harding is here, treasurer of the Bill Library Association. Dave Engelmann, hi, nice to meet you. He's president of the Library Association. And we have Harry Pearson, who is the former president of the Friends and was very gracious. We agreed to join the ad hoc committee with the investment committee at very short notice. And thank you to him, and thank you to everyone else who stepped forward for that and the amount of work you guys got done in a very short period of time. I'm very grateful. Um, as far as citizens comments. Anyone want, anything, would have anyone, anyone have anything now? Okay, um, so wanna move on for approval of last month's meeting, the August 16th meeting? If I could get a motion for that, please?
No move.
Okay, so that was.
Cheryl, second.
And Cheryl, second. Well, thank you so much. Um. All right, any correspondence?
Well, some of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Small detail. All in favor of approval of the minutes, or is there any comments or discussion on them?
Who is the movement? I heard Cheryl was second, but who was first?
John was first.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any comments or corrections on them? I know they were challenging, and Ellen, you did a great job with them, so thank you. That was a tough meeting.
Thanks, I saw that, Cheryl. I saw that somebody went back through and where I had referred to people as, um, members of the trustees or whatever, somebody corrected it, so that was good.
Well, thank you. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or extensions? Okay, unanimously approved. All right, correspondence?
None.
Okay. Um, moving on to the treasurer's report.
I don't need myself. We have July, the July and August reports, thanks to Gail, she has been really helpful. But, um, the July one is the first of the fiscal year. So although there are current income or receipts listed, those are really the carryover things from before. And then there is some small thing, smaller things further down. And then there are no expenditures shown for August, presumably because it did not come out of the bank account, as has been common lately. Then we go to the August report and the expenditures for both July and August are there. And there are, there's still income and expenses in the August account. Current balance is forty-four thousand ten eighteen. Is anybody quite? I would like also to say at this point that be thinking about whose turn it is next. Because as of January, I will have done the treasurer's job for eight years, and I do think it's somebody else's turn, thank you. So please be giving it some thought so that somebody else can step up when we have elections to decide.
Yeah, Carol, I.
Continue till then. I'm sorry?
I am just, I'm so grateful. I can't believe it's actually already been eight years, but you've done a fabulous job. And, and because she has it set up so well and really understands it, whoever steps forward next can be trained and brought on board so that it won't be super onerous. And yeah, definitely someone be, be thinking.
Gail is key to all of this because she really had it originally set up and helped me immensely when I couldn't figure out what was going on at times. But it's gotten to be more routine, that's true, and that the late, latest things are just the, the issues about how it's going to be taken from the bank and bank statement and so forth, getting the communication. But doing the spreadsheet is not that difficult.
Yeah, so, so thank you, and I'm not above groveling and begging, so, you know, it would be great to get volunteers before we go there. Any questions for Carol on the treasurer's report?
I do have a question. So, so Carol, when you have carryovers from the last year, as you did initially for the first month, those don't count as far as accruals against last year's budget, they're counting towards this year's budget?
This is, um, money, something don't carry over, what in the copy machine, for instance, we accumulate over the years. We handle that money, the town doesn't handle it, and so we build up money and it carries over. And so in this case, for instance, there's three thou, I'm looking, August, not July. But, um, there was the money that was left in that account, which is there toward buying the next copier or buying materials. It just gets carried into the next fiscal year, so it becomes part of what we have available in the bank account.
Okay.
The carryover in general that we had, what we hadn't spent. And there are also things in there like the grant, I mean, what we have in our account are include the grant and there's a fund of for Gail's Ferry books and some other, and income that comes in during the year. But the carryover things are what was left from last year after the final things were, the final expenditures coming out of it were taken. That's when it gets complicated in, in July sometime.
Sure.
The actual final figures because you're, you hang behind for a while.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Carol? Okay, so, um, we'll accept that as presented and subject to audit, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gail, your, your report.
Okay. Under building news, the, uh, the phones at the library were put out of commission last month when I didn't drought over six inches of rain in Ledge. The accompanying wind caused the rains build up on the, on the north porch and leaked through the wall to the basement. Unfortunately, the controller box got water inside and the system was nearaged beyond repair. We purchased that system in 2005 and the company we bought it from is no longer in business. As you may have seen in the paper, the town council approved an emergency expenditure to replace the phone system. We're installing the same system that is in Gail's Ferry, but sized for our building. And the contractor provided us the temporary system until the new one comes in. It was supposed to have come in by the end of last week, and when I asked about an update, the system did come in, but it was damaged in shipping, so he had to redo it. So now we're hoping for this week. Um, Carol, let me know as soon as they have it, where you come down. Under staff news, um, we have a change at Gail's Ferry Library. Elaine Steele resigned her position, take a job at the bookstore library. And the opening has been posted. Today is the last day. I've received nineteen applications.
Wow.
Seven possibilities. Four of them have MLSs and there are three from Lion Library, so they have the senior experience. So I'm hopeful we'll get somebody on the first go around. I also hired Abba Steric to replace Julian Oliver as library assistant. It's been a tough month trying to cover the, uh, the openings and the vacations that were in place. But we've made it through so far. Under gift and memo, gift policy and memo agreement, the investment committee had been busy learning about the library commission funds held by the Bill Library Association. They've met twice and will meet again briefly, we did before this meeting. The goal for the committee is to recommend an investment strategy for the library commission funds. The funds include the building fund, which were funds raised for the proposed addition in 2004, 2005. The William Holton Fund, a donation of stocks and equities left to the library commission when Mr. Holton passed away. And the library commission fund, various substantial donations of cash and stocks made to the library. In 2013, the library commission approved a gift and donation policy. At that time, the Bill Library Association was asked if they would hold any donations of cash or stocks and invest them to their broker, Sal Toka, on behalf of the library commission. A memorandum of agreement was drawn up between the library commission and the Bill Library Association, outlining the responsibilities of each group. Any stock donations have pretty much been left as is or in conservative portfolios. These funds have grown over time, and it seems appropriate for the library commission to be more involved in recommending an investment strategy for the fund. The committee, along with the Bill Library Association president, have suggested some minor changes to the memorandum and will be asking for your approval later on the agenda. And it's been before it.
Thanks, Gail. Anyone have questions for Gail about her report? Okay, um, moving on, um, friends committee, any reports? Actually, we have multiple people who could maybe. You have no what? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, investment committee. First of all, I, again, I want to thank all of you for stepping forward and or being strong armed into doing this. But I'm really, really, really grateful. And, and Harry, thank you for, for, yeah, helping as well. And it's just the amount of work I know you, you put in in such a short period of time is just very impressive, and I'm very grateful. And I would love to hear your report, what you want to share, or if you want to make a motion, however you'd like to start.
Okay, so, um, I'm the person who didn't step back fast enough, so I'll do the report.
Sorry, Carol, but thank you.
Um, so we met three times, we've met twice independently, though we met right before this meeting. And the biggest question that we have for the commission is, since we haven't been actively managing these funds, does the commission feel that we should continue to be passive? Or do you feel that we should be taking a more active role in the investment strategy for the money and stocks that we have? So I mean, that, that, that question is just really basic and, and it determines like how we proceed. So, um, I'd like some discussion on that question first.
For folks who aren't on the commission, I'd love to hear your thoughts. All right, excuse me, that aren't on the ad hoc committee.
What do you meet, um, Cheryl?
Okay, so, so like when, um, when Gail read her report, what's been going on is that there was, so, so the Bill Library Association has been managing these funds for us based on a strategy that was established back in 2013, which is an, was an extremely conservative strategy where we're really not making very much money on the funds. And, um, and there just hasn't been an active oversight on any of the stocks or cash donations that, that we have. So based on, like, what we've read, right? I mean, the money has been entrusted to the commission to, um, to use for various purposes, right? For either the building fund or for Gail's Ferry or whatever. And the question that we have, the fundamental question we have is whether we want to change that or whether we want to continue being passive or whether, you know, how much involvement do we, do we want to have for that, for those funds? So that, I mean, that's a basic question. I, I, and I should probably have started that Harry gave us a really awesome presentation at the first meeting where he taught us a lot about investment strategy from his experience and, and what he's done with, with the clubs that, that he had. But, um, but basically.
Actually, related to that, Gail, are you able to share, I think it was part of the agenda package, Harry's presentation slides, and I think one of them actually showed the whole spectrum of, you know, passive to active, conservative to aggressive sort of investing. And maybe that would actually help guide our conversation a little bit? And if I imagined that slide, I'm sorry.
I think it's the last slide.
Of course it is.
Give me a minute. And unfortunately, I think it's going to be sideways.
That's all right. And, and related to your question, Cheryl, like, is it something where we can have different approaches for each fund potentially?
Yeah, we certainly can, but since we haven't had any input at all in, you know, um, the question is whether that's something that the commission wants to do. Now, it doesn't have to be the entire commission, it could be the investment committee, it could be whomever. But the question is whether there's a desire clockwise, I think, um, to, to make a change there. Um.
Oh, awesome, thanks, Carol. So I assume right now we're at the conservative level?
Yeah, for sure. Um.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Can I interrupt a minute?
Please.
The, what you're seeing on the screen now is from, uh, Janey. This is the, uh, form that Sal sent me to basically summarize in a rather gross way the general level of risk and what you're willing to essentially by risk, what you're willing to tolerate in terms of potential loss. And the area to think about is first and foremost is when are you more than likely going to need funds? Because the investment time horizon is a significant part of any investment decision. So you have risk and investment time horizon to consider. Doesn't really relate to your first and fundamental question in terms of what role the commission wants to take. But I did want to point out that this is Jenny Montgomery and Scott's overview of what they approach the investment strategy for individual clients.
Uh, Ken, can I, uh, can I respectfully make a correction to what you presented? The Janey, uh, chart was handed out at the meeting because it was so large. And actually, it was more robust than the one that was presented here, which was a paraphrase from a fidelity risk assessment that I had received earlier. And the one you, the one from Janey, which is shown here, which is actually more comprehensive in my view. And I like the one that you handed out at the meeting here very much better than I paraphrased and put in my slideshow.
Do they both fundamentally say the same thing, though?
Uh, it, it is, but it does pick up some areas which differentiates between investing for growth and investing for income, which I thought was very important that Kent provided. Uh, but I agree with Kent that we're getting a little bit off the main topic for this meeting, and that is, should we be, should someone be communicating more frequently with Sal in getting his opinion as to how we should be investing our funds in relation to the current market condition? And also relating to him, any changes that we have in the needs for our monies?
And right now, how, just, just to get perspective, right now, how often are we communicating with Sal? I'm guessing.
We're not.
Not, right, that, all right, yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
So.
The Association, maybe.
Yeah, the Bill Library Association has not been communicating actively for the last several years.
So last ever, anyone, I'm going to throw something out just for discussion, but how about we believe we should be talking to him at least once a year, and, and let's define who we is. And then I, I would love the commission to tell me whether you think that's not often enough or too often. Um, and whether it should be the commission or the longer term ad hoc investment committee staying on as, as part of that.
So I think the frequency should probably be more than, maybe for the full commission, maybe once a year. But we have an awful lot of funds sitting there, and I think we need to have a more active role in if we are going to be managing our own funds into, into following them more frequently.
Um, are you thinking quarterly for a subcommittee?
I think that that, you know, we, I think that we need to look at it quarterly and, and make sure that we're on track for where we're going. But I think that, um, I, I, I think that we should be looking at a longer term investment strategy where you may not be seeing, you may not be wanting to make adjustments on a quarterly basis, but I think you need to make sure that you're actively looking at it on a more frequent basis. Does that make sense?
I think, I think we have to meet with Sal before we can, the investment committee can make any recommendations. And if you look on the agenda under the business, there is a motion to meet with Sal. He can tell us what we have now, and we can make a recommendation to the full commission as to what, how we want to change, if at all, the three accounts that we're talking about here, the Holton Fund, the Building Fund, and the Commission Fund that Carol talks about every month. So.
And then make us, when we, when we make that motion, or when someone makes that motion, can you clarify that it's the investment subcommittee? Because I think that's what you're saying, that should meet with Sal, right?
No, the whole commission should meet with Sal.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
Please, first. Yes.
Yeah, Cheryl, just to answer your question, I think that, uh, the commission should be more involved. My concern would be that we put whatever safeguards we need in to make sure that there's, you know, continuity in our decisions that aren't adversely affected by turnover on the commission. Uh, and I think that, um, looking at our investments regularly, maybe quarterly makes sense annually for the entire commission. And who makes up, uh, that review group or that, that group that, or that individual that is, is got their finger on the pulse of our investments? We just have to make a decision on how we go about doing that. But I think we should be more involved to answer your question.
Thank you. So, um, does anyone else have any comments? Because then I, um, the other, the other major deliverable that we had was the memorandum of agreement, the modifications to that. And, um, what's in that memorandum of agreement was predicated on how the discussion went. So is there any further discussion on, um, on whether anyone is opposed to our having more involvement in the direction of our investments?
I think we can have more involvement, and after having entire commission listen to Sal, then we may want the commission to make, to set the, the direction, the, the amount of risk and so forth in a general sense, but then have a investment committee ongoing that meets within that at some stipulated frequency. Future reports, maybe once a year.
Yeah, but it's not going to be nothing. Like, you know, we're going from, from nothing to something. So the, I'm just wanted to make sure that the general agreement is that there should be something as opposed to nothing.
Something.
Yeah, I, I think something as well. I think Beth was trying to say something if I'm seeing the unmutes correctly.
The mutes, unmutes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I do believe that there needs to be, um, more oversight. Um, my question, I do have several questions, I probably aren't for tonight. But, um, I think that when you're looking at, um, the long-term goals, they should probably be tied into, the director's, you know, five-year plans and how we can support those with it, with a goal of the investments to maybe market, mark those plans as being more important. And depending on how things are invested, obviously, the timing of, you know, rolling over things and stuff. Also, I think would be tied into like the five-year plan.
Absolutely. Okay.
Just to piggyback on it, I think that the strategic plan should, should play some role in our direction on our investments also.
That's what I meant to say, exactly.
Barbara, Ellen, or Brian, is there anything you want to add to that part before we move on to the motion to approve?
Um, no, I mean, I know from working with financial planners that they are required for compliance purposes to at least be meeting with us or a delegate once a year. So it's really important that a minimum, we're doing that. Other than that, I guess I'm really ambivalent. Like personally, I don't want to commit to taking on any other meetings or anything like that. But more as like a, somebody who thinks the commission should be fully engaged and active. I, I do think that we need to be a little bit, at least turn it up a little bit.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the same feeling. I'm glad that we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. Barbara, anything to add?
No, I'm in agreement as well. I think we should be more involved.
Great, Cheryl, it looks like you have something to add.
I was just going to say with that in mind, what, um, Gail has presented here are the revisions to the existing agreement that we're proposing. And, um, there, there were two main changes here. I mean, a lot, some of it was cosmetic in, in, in a sense. But under actions three A1. under actions three A1, um, has, um, has the library commission directing the, um, the, the, um, the investments, how the investments are, are handled. And, um, and then there was, and there's another change further down where um, the commission, um, so the commission is determining the investment strategy, the accounts are um, on behalf of the, sorry, it wasn't three A1, it was, um, three C1. That's, that's one where, where the library commission is determining the investment strategy. And then further down, there is something where, um, the commission and the library director, um, would be directing the use of the funds. Um, wasn't that in there?
Yeah, it's, um.
Oh, there, it's three, there it is.
Yeah, here, number three.
Yeah.
Based on the conversation we've just had, this is the version that you want us to vote on, right?
Yes.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the changes to the memorandum of agreement between the library commission and
Have the changes as, um, shown in the markup that you provided.
Did you say that again?
Thank you. All right, so Carol, um, made the motion and then seconded.
Seconded. Yeah, you want it.
Okay, um, I think Beth may have already seconded, but, so, all right, so um, did you want to go over any of the additional changes? Okay, go ahead, Kent.
Hi. Go ahead, go ahead, Kent.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Um.
Kent, yeah.
I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in, but fundamental question, and the reason I brought this to Gail and the commission was I completed the tax return for the association last year and fundamentally, why is the association handling the funds for the commission? Why aren't they in the commission? Which fundamentally is, why was this agreement drawn up? And it may pain to some tax issues or other issues that I'm not aware of. And perhaps somebody on the commission knows the history, but if you are going to be more active and involvement, it may have some effect on whether these are indeed reported for tax purposes, or I should say, information since it's a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, and actually, that's the initial reason, as, and Gail, you know, correct me if I have this slightly off, but so basically, because, um, you are a 501(c)(3), one, you know, people could get a tax credit for making a gift, and two, we could also get matching funds. Whereas if it came directly to the library commission or into the library, that wouldn't have been the case.
And my, my question is, is there some hurdle in terms of, uh, control that the commission, or that may be, uh, detrimental to maintaining that deductibility for contributions?
I wouldn't think so. Um, I think the, the, if I can add on to what Rebecca said, um, the other piece of this is people are wanting to give us stocks, and there's no way for us to accept stocks to the town. It would be immediately liquidated into cash and, and not, um, invested in the best way. Uh, so this gave us a way to have a, a savings, if you will, for funds that we might not need right away. Um, as far as any implications tax way, tax-wise, I think the fact that you are a 501(c)(3), um, takes care of that, and I, I don't think having the library commission be more involved in how they are invested is going to affect that.
Gail.
Excuse me, I, I think that issue was probably dealt with when this original uh, memorandum of agreement was established, so I don't think it's a problem.
Well, I'm, I'm wishing that that is true. I'm just concerned that if we're getting into issues of control, uh, I would suggest, I'm not in the commission, I, I would suggest that an appropriate, uh, either tax attorney or whatever might be, uh, or some attorney might be consulted in terms of, um, making sure that you're not voiding that deductibility, which was the reason it was transferred. So it's, um, just something that I wanted to make the commission aware of. Uh, it's out of my bailiwick to know whether there's an issue or not. So let me leave it at that, and, uh, I'm gonna just shut up and let you folks continue.
Gail, didn't it come up that there are other libraries with similar arrangements?
Yes, um.
This is, so this isn't unique, right?
No, East Line Library has a foundation, and the foundation is specifically to accept donations into a 501(c)(3) organization on behalf of the library. Um, they're also a music municipal library, so, um, there is a precedent. And, and the other thing I, I, um, will say is the, the library commission always had a say on how the funds were to be used. So that was in the original memo. Um, the only additions is that they're, um, going to become more involved in how they're invested in terms of keeping tabs on what the investments are doing and listening to the recommendation of the advisor.
With the, um, East Line, I believe, it was you said, library, um, that is parallel in many ways, but does their library commission then direct the funds, or does the special foundation direct the funds? I mean, how they're, um, invested?
I know they have a board of directors, and I know the library director serves on that. I, I have done seen their bylaws, but I could get a copy if, uh, we wanted to look at that and see how that, that works out.
Is that more closely, um, relates to what Kent is concerned about, I think? If we're, if the directing of them is not under the association, do we lose the protection of the association in the, the tax situation? If they're not also doing investing their money?
Mm-hmm.
We should check on it.
Do you know if the, if, if the East Line Library, the is their board completely separate from?
Yeah.
Okay, and is the library director an ad hoc member or a voting member?
I, I, I don't know for sure. I would, ad hoc.
Okay.
For years, we've been spending the library commission's money without asking the, the library association if we could do it. Why, why can't that apply to the other two funds?
Well, let me, let me see if I can find out on how it, how it operates. Um, I know it's a, it's a whole separate board from the library commission that runs it.
Um, yeah, and maybe, I mean, it may also, I mean, maybe this is illogical, but it may be something that Sal would have a, a sense on to, you know, just to make sure, you, you know, that we're, we're not somehow misdirecting, but it, it, I mean, we've had no investment strategy for so long. But it, it's, it's an interesting question, I guess. You know, we just want to make sure that we are doing it right.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to wait until we have that answer until we can vote on this?
I, I think we can vote on it, and then, you know, the memorandum requires two signatures. One from our chairman and one from the president of the, the library association. So I don't see.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll get the memorandum set and then find out if we should be signing it. Is that sort of what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so additional questions, comments?
Just a, a comment from the library association. We will be meeting on the proposed memorandum of understanding on the 28th of October, which should give us, uh, time to answer or get some of these questions answered.
Great, thank you. Ralph, you look like you were about to pop in with a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, um, so all in favor of the motion uh, to approve the changes to the memorandum of agreement between the library commission and the Bell Library Association as recommended by the investment committee, you know, with their changes, um, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, so it passes unanimously. Um.
For purposes of the minute, that's not the same diagram, that's not the same markup that's in with the agenda, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is, okay, then I can just refer back to the agenda.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Um, and then would someone like to make a motion to invite Sal to come to our October meeting? Assuming he's available.
We already did that, didn't we, one time ago?
No.
Oh, we kind of talked about it. I'm getting all official tonight. So I got, um, all right, I think I had a motion from John and Cheryl. I'll put you a second if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, um, any discussion about that, or any questions about that? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Um, if you want, Rebecca, I will contact Sal tomorrow and invite him to come in October.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, and I guess we need to decide how we're going to meet.
Uh, I just, I mean, I know I should ask other people's opinions first, but I will say remotely the, the hybrid thing certainly didn't work, and I, I don't know, I mean, I work at Connecticut College, and we just have all the time when a bunch of students got all together, so I would love to keep it remotely unless anyone's really opposed to that, and, or even mildly opposed, but, you know, like, let's talk about it. Anyone have thoughts?
To your, for Sal, too, I imagine.
Yeah, I'm good with remote.
He prefers virtual.
My vote as well. Mine, too.
Virtual.
I've heard from everyone, but maybe Brian or Ellen, and I will say you guys were so good about, like, jumping in in a nice rotation.
I'm definitely virtual, and I'm trying to have as few meetings in person as possible, and some, I can't work, I can't really avoid it, but.
All right, I, I, I mean, yeah, thank you, Brian, sorry to jump in too fast. Yeah, I, I think if, if you don't mind doing it virtual, it, it, I just think it's keeping us all safer, and especially as we're getting into the colder months, like, you know, and at least without masks, we can hear each other, so if, as long as Sal is comfortable with it being virtual as well, like, if that puts any sort of monkey wrench in it, we can, we, we talk about it, but other than that, I'd love to keep it virtual.
Okay.
All right, so our next meeting is October 18th, seven o'clock, online. Um, so with that, if I can get a motion to adjourn at seven forty-six.
I'll move.
I, I can second.
All right, Cheryl moved and Ellen seconded. Thank you all so much, and again, investment subcommittee, thank you so, so much for your work. And, and Dave and Ken, thank you for being here as well.
And big thanks to Harry.
Oh, yeah, Harry, sorry, I, I was looking at all the different pictures, and I I'm so used to seeing you, I just put you as part of the commission. But, yeah, it's Harry as well, thank you for catching that.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, bye. Bye-bye.
Bye, y'all.